I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, all.
Morning.
Sun is shining and not whitening and thundering and banging like it did last night again. I would accept a motion to approve the amended agenda, amended amended agenda.
I move we approve the amended agenda.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. Minutes for August 20th.
I would move to approve the minutes from August 20th, they look as fine.
Okay, we have a motion.
I'll say it.
And a second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All same sign, motion carries. General public concerns.
Roger, you called me last night, did you have something to go and talk to us about?
Okay, Roger Myers.
Here's the first time, I got smet down on the ground from the county putting on me, here's the, you can pass around. That's the first time I put post in. And I couldn't get an overage, you see, because smet's on the ground, you know, on my property. County when they put the, on the bank there. So I had at all expense for nothing, I pulled it out and I pulled it up where I have now. And Rick was supposed to get to me, they're supposed to dig it in. And Ben didn't do his job, because he didn't listen to him evidently, because they beat it in. Well, I got damaged off the post, I got damaged, who knows, down the ground, because I saw through the guy on the back of it, he beat it with a bucket. And it shouldn't have been done, it should have been dug in, like what you agreed to do. It never got done, well, I got damaged to the post. The ones in are now, here's the cost of post. And that smet's in that far, excuse me, picture, on me, on the inside of my property. And they said move it up, right, you and back then Paul went up, probed it, they said, yeah, that smet was there, you can see it on the picture, isn't it? And they didn't take it, they didn't get the smet down there, he beat on it, and he couldn't beat it anymore, and he couldn't push it any further west. He got damaged, I don't know, smet's in the ground, it's hard to tell, I could have split it down there, won't last, you know. I just want to write the post against, because he didn't do what they're supposed to do, they're supposed to dug it in. I know Ben didn't listen to what they're, but he didn't call me or nothing, didn't, didn't get done, they tried to, but it tipped on her behind my back and drove it in. Couldn't beat it anymore, so it got damaged.
So
That's, that's the first, so that's what I, the smet's that far in, I couldn't get over, I had at all expense for nothing, I couldn't get it over, you know, as you can see, it's way out of line.
Yeah, it is out of line.
It's in that far, the smet, yeah.
So my question is this, you, you want the price of this post and then if that is paid for, then, then this matter is done.
Yeah, but I might have to come back someday, get the smet out if I go to put more posts out.
No, we aren't, we aren't going to have, for him, more times out there, Roger, I mean, this post has been, been moved because there's rock in there.
Smet.
Cement.
Not rock, yeah, and you guys put it in there, the county did. So I'm saying down the road, I gotta put more, you know, another post in them, then I may have to get the smet out of there. Off my property, but I'm saying, I'm not worried about that now. But, but I ain't able to get a post in or, we're not getting the smet out.
It could be a rock that's been there for
No, it's not a rock.
And we have no business putting people's fences in anyway, I have no idea why we're going to put this post in, I
Because the smet's down there, I couldn't get it down there, as you can see, I couldn't get down, you said take them out, I said you'd be a little bit smet in the west side and the north side to get out. You said if I didn't dig it in, well, they didn't do that, they did, they beat it in. And they should have dug it in, like you said. I don't, Ben didn't listen to you or what, but somebody didn't listen to somebody, because it was supposed to have been dug in, not beat in. And that's the problem, the bottom of the top.
So for fifty-three dollars, are we, what are we going to do?
I don't see any damage to that post, if it's the one that's out of line, is that the one that, uh?
Yeah, there's damage on top of the post.
No, there is not.
Yes, there is.
All right, you say so, that's your opinion.
Yeah, it is, it's been beat on, and I don't know what the bottom's like, it's gotta be, I talked to the guy in the back of it, he said he couldn't beat it any further. He couldn't push it any further west of the smet there in the way.
Would the problem go away, Roger, if we, would the problem go away for fifty-three dollars, and future, cement needs to be moved, you take that out, right? Not our problem from here on. Fifty-two dollars is all.
How about I get the smet out of there, you guys put it in there.
Why was it put in there?
That's the problem, I ain't going to do it now.
It was done, I think, back when that drainage, uh
Oh, it's been ten years ago, I bet.
Yeah, but the drainage system comes through there, that's where that big tile that runs out west to town empties into that creek above your place, right?
Yeah, above me.
So I'm, I'm assuming that back years ago, I don't know when, when that was disturbed, that somehow some rock got put in there.
The smet, not rock.
Cement, rock?
Yeah. But you can see the smet there now.
I suppose the reason there's any involvement from the county is because the fence was removed to put it in the drainage system or widen the drainage depths or something.
They, uh, they dug it out, there's, there's, you know, smet, some smet's laying there now on top of the ground, you can see it, you can go out there and look at it, but you see the damage, probably too really. So that's all I'm saying, but down the road, I might have to get the smet out of there, you know, and I don't feel I have to do it, because you guys put it in there, but I'm not worried about that today.
Well, today, today we're worried about it. We're going to pay fifty-three dollars for a post.
It should have been done now.
That it's bent, that it
Like I said, we're going to take the west side out, a little bit smet on the north.
But we aren't going to spend four days out there digging out for this rock.
Oh, no, anyway.
Well
If they done it right and taken an hour, it would have been done, we wouldn't have been here even. But they beat it in, so digging it in, like I said they do. That's the problem.
What's you guys' wish?
My opinion, that post is perfectly fine, it's a couple inches out of a line with the fence, it serves a purpose, I'm not going to spend county tax here dollars fighting this.
It's damaged though.
Okay.
Bottom's damaged, the bottom's damaged, I know the bottom's damaged, it's beat in. The proof is there, go look at it, it's damaged, beat on the top.
Well, you mentioned, a couple of you guys said if you pay for, it's a little expensive of a post, but post has gone up, and it's fifty-three dollars. If the county would by any stretch of the imagination pay that, you're going to sign a waiver that says, we are done with this, period. You got no recourse to come back and worry about cement or anything else. If, and I'm not overly agreeable about paying for a fifty-three dollar post, if we would, you'll sign a waiver, this case is closed.
How do I get the smet out of there, the county put it
I, that's, you're not going to worry about the smet underneath there. The smet's been there for years.
Like Bruce said, it could be a rock.
I put it
It could be a rock.
And I'm glad you
And the only reason there's any involvement from the county is it has to go back before, and Carl can remember even, but back how many years ago? The county's not in the business of building people's fences, no. But if they have to remove a fence for a drainage project or road project or another project, there is usually agreement, they will put the fence back. Or compensate the landowner for the fence, one or the other. But that's the only reason that we've been talking about this, because I'm pretty sure I could probably find some fences along the road that I'd like fixed, but I don't believe I'm going to bring that to mind from the county. Uh, so
You think, Roger, you think the problem will go away if we pay you for the fence post?
Well, the smet's going to be still there, you know, on my property from, from you guys.
That's not my question, you think
Yeah, I know, I know what, I know what you're talking about.
Would you be satisfied to go away with the problem if we pay for the post?
I suppose for now, but, uh
Well, I mean, I, you'll sign a waiver, or, you're done with this, like Bruce said, we're not going to revisit this every year for the rest of however long anybody's here.
I know what you mean.
Because
It shouldn't have ever been happened, it shouldn't have been dug in, like you said, it didn't get done.
Maybe so.
That smet would have been gone and post would have been damaged, you know what I mean, that's what I'm saying.
I guess that's my opinion, if, if, if we have to spend fifty-three dollars, I'll pay for it on my own account, we'll just get it over with. But the only way we're going to do it is just have it done, because I'm tired of listening to it. It's been three years.
This is the first I've ever heard about it.
No, Paul and I were out, was out there
Yeah, that's
A couple of years ago.
I was out there, Bruce was. I've probably had at least five or six phone calls, even been in my house three times.
I couldn't get him to do anything, but for quite a while.
It's not necessary, that's why.
Roger, if we're going to spend the fifty-three bucks on the post, then we'll, but then we're going to be done with it.
We're going to sign, we're going to sign a waiver, we're not going to go back.
What happens if I don't do that, then they'll come out and
Then I, let me do what you want to do with it.
How about the smet though, I mean, that's what I'm asking.
You have to talk to your
How, how deep do we have to go down?
You're going to complain that the bank's eroding, because the cement's gone.
How deep do we have to go down looking for
No, it's very deep. We have They dug, they dug it up here the other day, uh, smet's laying there probably a foot deep, I don't know how
You think we have to have a little compromise here, either we pay you fifty-three dollars, it goes away, or we will pay you anything, you talk to your lawyer, that'd cost you a lot more money.
Neither one of us want to do that.
Where do I sign the, sign the deal at?
Well, we'll have to put something together, we don't have a deal, just fine.
Let me, let me think about it a little bit, I don't know about the smet, I'm saying, you call me or somebody, let me know, or
No, you said you'd call us.
Oh, you want me to call you about it, you don't have to do it right now, but that's, I think, the best compromise.
Who would I call?
Uh, I guess call up here and visit with, uh, the auditor?
You accept or reject, if you accept, we give you fifty-three bucks, if you don't accept
Then we'll, then we'll get the smet out down the road, huh?
If we don't, if you don't accept the fifty-three dollars, we will
How much does the smet then though?
Roger, how much was it?
The smet's going to go away.
I think it's, you know, that was, yeah.
Fifty-three dollars, forty-six.
He's got it.
Fifty-three what?
Fifty-three, forty-six.
I think it's tomorrow that Cassu, Winnebago Works in Hancock are meeting with Kim Wilkens' region, which is the Davidson Play Region, asking to join that region. So, that will definitely affect the Western Quadrant, the six counties that I have a responsibility for, because Emmett County is kind of left up there alone. They don't touch any of the borders, so based on the code they're identifying that Emmett would have no choice but to actively as well. That's something that their board, I've met with a couple of times, are not wanting to do, and they're trying to just want to stay with CSF. So, I'm not for sure what will transpire. It won't be effective until July of nineteen, so we would still have Cassu as part of the Western Quadrant and three other counties as part of the Northern.
We're still on the agenda for Wednesday?
Yes, Wednesday, yes, we have a quadrant meeting.
They'll probably discuss them too.
Yeah, and our quadrant meeting, so what we're doing instead of having a board meeting, is every quarterly basis we're getting together just with each quadrant, so I'll have the rest of the counties and what we're going to be discussing, which is kind of exciting because it does affect the area. Dean is going to be coming down, is the access center. So, there was a Senate file that was passed, the five oh four, which started this process, and it indicated that there would be six access centers in the state of Iowa for mental health, which would include a subacute crisis stabilization and complex needs bed. So, we are looking at trying to have one established in Fort Dodge. So, that's kind of our main goal, which would extend more fortunately Google rather than doing committals, and as often would be able to drop that individual off, so.
Is some of these now, or there's going to be?
There's going to be.
There isn't any?
There isn't many yet, and we're looking at, you know, some possibilities, hoping that they'll let there be some pilots. There'll be six, and they'll have to be within a hundred mile radius drive for the individuals where they're located. So, we, legislature will determine where they're located, but we're hoping that they'll pick Fort Dodge as the community.
Okay, well, we appreciate that, and I know it's, sometimes it seems like it's way over all of our heads, and we don't have a whole lot of control over what, we just kind of follow along, like chief.
Alan, you got our hands full. I've been on that committee for a year, and I don't know what they're doing yet.
A lot, a lot of changes.
Very important though.
And a lot of the regions are in the same thing. Woodbury County leaving their region and going with Rolling Hills. There's some other counties, Green County, Left Heart Island, are going with the Central Region, so there's a lot of other counties that I think just started in two thousand thirteen, and so everybody's just, those people have been in these positions for a long period of time, and they're used to kind of having things how they've always had it, and now controversy is coming up, and there's a lot of disagreements on how, how things should be run, along with managed care coming in is what's really had an effect, when we lost key management, that's a kind of a test of scale, so, for funding.
And the record, who employs the employees is a big argument, too.
Right, right, in terms of having one fiscal agent of county social services or having each county as an appointment of record. I'd say, in my collaboration, the majority of the staff are probably against that just because it would affect the benefits. It would affect your long-term benefits, how you've done there, the insurance would be a smaller group, so you'd have a higher insurance premium, you'd still be eligible for IFRS, CSF would have to apply to get their IFRS, but, yeah, that'd be a pretty big impact, I don't think.
So, that's not, correct me if I'm wrong, that's not decided yet?
Not decided yet. What we're doing is, we have hired a consultant, Paul Gross, an HR consultant, I don't know if he's a Paul, he's been for a couple of counties, and we're going to be having an HR team, so I take two from the Western Quadrant, myself and actually Kathy will be on that committee, to determine, and then at that point it'll come up to our CSF board for a vote, as in Wednesday implement, so.
Yeah, a lot of moving parts, as they say.
It's kind of like getting this DNR.
Yeah, kind of.
I mean, when you start reading through it, it's like your head just starts almost turning, because you're like, wow.
You throw half of it out, you read the paper, pictures and measurements and...
Well, that's, you know, with all the counties, they're all the same, want to make sure that we're all in the best.
I think Alan's hit the nail on the head, though. Everybody wants it to be like it used to be, and the state legislature won't let us do that. And every county thinks they've been amused because some other county got the rights, which is a war. We've got to work through it.
It's a big war.
Well, hang in there, we appreciate you.
All right, thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. Sure. So, let's go down to one of the additions there on the, while we have a few minutes.
Travis is with us today, so if you have any questions, you can ask him. This is the only call we receive.
So, this is for the key fob?
Well, key fob or key, I'm not sure which direction went. Somebody has said fobs are better, some people have said that cards are better, so I don't know.
Either one.
We didn't specify, so we just have any spec.
So, that would be for each door in courthouse plus the main door, right?
All the main, all the outer doors, and then all the doors that lock inside.
And they'd be keyed according to those who need to get in that door?
Correct.
There were fifty-four.
Well, walking through with Dave, we didn't count above the doors.
Okay.
He originally counted the doors, and I had a series to do those.
Okay.
So, it was forty-eight, is what it ended up being.
Forty-eight, forty-eight, okay.
Oh. So, I'm hearing.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, here's the chairman.
Okay, all right, well, this is the total price, total bid is one six nine nine eight six oh three, one hundred and sixty-nine nine eighty-six oh three. And, correct me if I'm wrong, have we been putting money aside for?
We have, for a couple of years.
Couple of years, we've put money, knowing that, that this was going to be on the horizon. I don't know if we, what our kitty is, for that.
Peggy does, so we...
Not quite that much.
Yeah.
Travis, if we needed to, could we do this in phases?
We could, yeah. You just have to pick out what doors you want.
Okay.
Naturally, the more doors you do at one time, it makes it a lot cheaper to do things at one time, because I'm here, you know, I'm not bringing all my tools in, bringing all my tools out, so labor-wise, it would help out a lot to do.
So, my question is, I'm sure it isn't going to say key fob for courthouse. So, if I dropped mine in the parking lot out here, would that thing be active if someone picked it up?
Picked it up, yeah.
Come in tonight at ten o'clock?
Right away, you'd have to tell that you lost it, and then we'd just shut you off, and then issue a new one.
Like wager key would be, too, if somebody found your key.
Right.
So, it's probably a way...
Well, I understand that, but I'm just saying, I didn't...
The key off.
And is it just like a credit card, is that the...
Yeah, it can be a credit card, or it can be a little fob like this.
Okay.
And actually, I see the point now where you can use your smartphone to also, wait for program your smartphone.
My smartphone needs to program immediately that I can use it.
So, in regards to Bruce's question, if a key fob that was lost, you can reprogram the lock so that it doesn't accept that?
Correct, we can just shut that key fob off, so that will have no access to any of the building, and then just give them a new one, because each one has its own ID, computer ID tag.
So, that's the other part of the thing, that at seven o'clock at night, when Peggy shows back up, we can track her and say she was here by seven o'clock.
Well, if you have a basement in the building, you know who's in the building, at what time of day.
Right, and we can program each door to be open at certain times of the day, to let people in, lock down at, you know, five o'clock, no more access.
Oh, okay.
And we don't have to go around with keys and lock everything.
Right, and same thing, we can get people access between certain times, so we can get into that door.
So, this is all very programmable.
Right.
I got a question. It seems per door cost is quite a bit higher than what we spent at the LAC. Is that probably due to the fact that getting the wiring to all the doors?
Yeah.
For construction, new construction?
Right, and the building's old, it, I mean, if you had false tiles in the whole building, it would be way easier, but we're going to put, you know, metal wire mold a lot throughout the building, second floor, third floor, just because we want to protect that wire, not have people to go cut it, see if it uses metal, and then jump in the ceiling wherever we can.
So, this isn't going to be a three-day deal in your...
No, it's going to take...
I mean, approximately, what would it, is your timeframe, when are you allotting?
Three months, to do all the doors. And then we'd have to switch out all, luckily, we won't have to switch up the hardware on the doors, we've gone the way to just switch out the hardware in the frames, you know, to cut strikes in each door, is what we'd have to do.
It was my intent to try to keep the integrity of the courthouse look as much as we could, and Travis is on the way to do that.
Yeah, along with American glass, sort of, we're going to work together on it.
Some of the pros of this operation is, we don't know how many keys are out there floating around over the years. Not that we didn't lose them, but we don't know how many have been duplicated with family members, a hundred years ago. Security means...
Keys they couldn't duplicate unless...
Right.
Right.
They had access to the system, which they should.
Yeah, how long have these current locks been in place?
Forever.
Late nineteen thirty-eight, from the building of...
So, Carl actually brings up a good point, and in this day and age, strange, stranger things have happened.
Sometimes when you're up here on election night, and you're here till midnight or after, you get to think of creepy things like that, what if somebody has a key, even though we have the doors locked, and can come in, so...
Yeah, I think it's the first step in additional security measures, that unfortunately, in this day and age, are just warranted. So, Peggy's question of doing it in stages, because I, I mean, we don't want to overstrap our reserve account.
And I can double check, too, and see where we're at, for our balances.
So, I mean, we could give you like a directive to start on the major, if you will.
Yep.
Entry doors, and get that done, and then maybe see what that dollar amount is, and then while these remaining, we do it a year later, I mean, something to that effect, or, I don't know, I'm just putting, trying to put a timeframe on to the money side of it, because it's pretty expensive.
Yeah, it is, well, I was thinking, Donald, I think when we did the LAC, it was like twenty-five hundred bucks a door.
Yeah.
Thirty-five hundred a door.
Usually, I mean, twenty-five and three thousand a door, like you said, new construction.
Yeah, new construction's cheaper than remodeling because of the issues you're running into.
It's built accordingly.
Built up, yeah, I'm going to go through a lot of real bits.
Yeah, you will. Is it something we want to discuss for a while, or...
I was going to say, is there a time on this?
Yeah, how many days does the quote go for?
Uh, I got project grading on a lot of the hardware, so six months.
Oh, that shouldn't be...
I would hope we'll be able to come together, and Peggy will be able to get us the numbers as to what we got for our hold, and where we're happy to be, I mean, that's the, I just didn't know if you needed it in four days, or if you needed...
I'd actually prefer it in a few months, just busy right now.
Well, we can probably help you with that.
Yeah.
But it's back on the agenda.
By that time, Peggy will be able to go through the books and see how much you can do at one time, too, that'd be a good idea.
Right, yeah.
We do that, put him on the agenda in a week, well, we are going to be here next week.
Put him on for about two, three weeks.
Oh, yeah.
Are you going to be around a little bit today, or do you have now?
I gotta go for study, but if you need me to, I can.
Well, I was just going to like, want to walk through the building and tell me kind of what you're going to do, actually.
Oh, yeah, we can do that.
Okay.
I'll make time.
All right.
Well, our last tentative schedule, we have a couple of driveways and a completion hearing, so would you want to, could you stay for like twenty minutes, twenty-five minutes?
Yeah.
Would you do that?
Sure.
Perfect.
I would, thank you. Tentatively say to put our decision, a month's time, month out, put this on as an agenda item, does that make sense? To decide our details?
Put it a month out.
We're at the third, we're off, so you're thinking like the seventeenth through the twenty-fourth?
Up to that degree, yeah. I mean, just...
We have a number.
We'll put a date on it, we'll just get the gamble road, so...
And then we can get back to Travis with the, you know...
You want to go to twenty-fourth?
That's fine, that's fine.
Twenty-fourth, Peggy, if you want to write that on there.
Getting back to the, putting things on the agenda ahead of time, we don't want to call in afternoon on the week before.
Travis probably stuffed in before, so we'll say...
I know, yeah.
No, I'm saying for us, we don't want to, we don't wait till the last minute to put it on the agenda.
Okay.
Do you want to get claims right quick?
I think we should, that way we don't have people in the other office yelling. Anybody look those numbers over? I did.
I come up with a hundred and seventeen thousand, nine hundred seventy-three and sixty-two cents on general, eleven thousand, seven seventy-five point oh one on drainage.
That was what I had.
Motion to fail.
We have a motion for those numbers as stated.
Second.
In a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
Well, we hear close, Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the authorized a chairman, know the auditors can sign a letter of support to Home Line Housing Incorporated.
And I gave you a copy of that letter in your packet, that just states that we're supplying the five thousand dollar local match, as we agree upon a budget time.
I'll second that motion.
With the letter in your packet, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion?
This seems semi-familiar, but Peggy, can you just explain, is this a...
One second please, will you?
Your idea?
For the...
Just five thousand dollars?
Right, and we have that in our budget, they don't always ask for it, but the money is there. There were a few years they didn't, this last year they did, and it sounds like from what Sherri Reed said in her email to me, that they would be able to afford you in this year.
The state didn't fund it like they've done before, so the county, they're having...
Is that what it is?
Yeah, they pass it down, trickle down.
And then, just a real quick explanation of what the Home Land Housing Trust Fund is exactly?
That, I'm not, I'm not, it wouldn't be good to explain that, there is someone who's on the Home Land Housing Trust Board.
Basically, help low-income people to be able to afford housing.
Yeah, and they're getting state grant money, federal grant money, is what they apply for.
They take that, and this would be our contribution towards that.
In order to get that, we have to put some, we have to have some skin in the game in order to have the state to put the funds into, the way I understand it.
Okay, that's good.
So, we have a motion and a second, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries. Do I need to sign one of the, do I need to sign that?
Nope, that's the one that they...
We already have, right? Okay, so we have that done. Um...
Want to do your drainage?
I suppose Rick and Trish are sitting in there waiting, we can make a motion to go into drainage quick, do that continuation.
Make a motion to go in drainage, second that.
Motion in second for drainage, all in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign for drainage.
This is just amazing.
Mind-blowing.
Yes, it is. On paper, how many copies do they have to make, multi-copies, too?
Seven years, I think.
Very nice copy, Paul.
It is.
Very clean.
Very clean, yes.
You got the picture of the fence post?
Oh, he took it.
It's ugly. I grew up on a farm, I can tell.
Roger came in.
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
Your name's Mud.
My name's Mud?
Yeah.
All right, I don't even like...
You ruined the fence.
Put a coffee can over the top of it and leave it alone.
Anybody looked at it?
Why, from Rick's?
I know Rick's looked at it.
I've been out there.
There's nothing wrong with it.
No.
The fence post that he's got right next to it is leaning at a five-degree angle.
What I don't understand is, when I stood back and looked at it, it looked like it was nice and lined, but his picture shows it's a little, I don't know what to do with this.
I know it got hooked like your...
Yeah.
He didn't see you?
We did, we did, I told him I'm done with it, and even if it did go out of line, I'm still done with it.
Yeah, we're done.
Pretty much, we told him.
It's private fence, private property, we shouldn't have to do anything with it. We tried to be nice, neighborly while we were over there.
When Paul and I went out over a year and a half ago, he probed down there, and he was almost the length of the probe before we hit rock, so I don't know if he's using a twenty-foot head post, or...
I don't know, I don't know how long that post was.
I don't know, we, from what my foreman told me, is when he pushed on it, and then did it butt a couple times, he got it to go in another foot, foot and a half, Roger wanted to, because it was close enough, it just pointed out at the top, easy solution, just cut the top six inches off, and be good.
It's not...
It's not.
There's a little bit of motion in the middle of the top of the bucket. I mean, a little bit, it may be an inch and a half.
Yeah, no, it's the fact that he doesn't actually do anything anymore, and he's got plenty of time to sit and think about it.
Ben, very nice mention, we gave him a proposal this morning, he was going to pay fifty, two dollars for the post, if it'd go away and he didn't worry about the concrete.
But he has to sign...
If he wanted to get that, he'd go to his lawyer.
...again, with any complaints.
He's not sure he wants to do it.
I'll just, I'll write the check.
I, yeah, I'll, I'll put it with him. I already, I already offered to do that.
If that makes it go away, yeah, I'll...
We came to that conclusion.
You'd never make it go away.
Now, that's the problem, he won't let it go, because it's just going to keep eating at him, so...
Well, he'll sign off on it that it's done.
Keep, keep waiting.
All right, here we are, DD number three, the continuation of the completion.
Yeah.
The floor is yours, Mr. Hopper.
Okay, they have not, been out there, of course, because of the ground conditions and grass cover, I really think the only way to accomplish this is to put off until the crops are out, as far as the final inspection of the landowner that's complained about it. They've got rocks and the weeds, what's that?
Be nice to have a good breeze.
Yeah, it would, later.
Or, you know what I mean?
Yeah, not tomorrow.
Kill the weeds, so they can get out there.
Kill the bugs. So, it's a matter of how far do you extend it, to be sure it can be taken there?
Well...
I think there's only the one complaint, isn't that right, Trish? And I drove a fair amount of it.
Yeah, how's your, not, you made the first call, but your, you know, the company inspection?
Yeah, what I was over last week was good, but I didn't go through the area where they complained, I wasn't going to do that, so...
Not knowing how big the rocks are.
Right, we might have to put us through there with a four-wheeler or something. Ideally, it'd be nice if we could wait and then burn it off, we'd have to be sure who we had to talk to to give permission to do that.
What is the section that he, they're referring to, is it like twenty acres, is it?
No.
Ten acres, is it, up along the ditch?
Along the ditch.
Just along the ditch.
It's a, what, fourth of a mile, maybe, eighth of a mile, short.
Not a very big area.
Is there, for lack of a better term, silt or strip, so seeding, any distance?
Oh, it's actually nineteen, no.
I'm not sure, did you say whether it was crop or syrupy?
It kind of cuts in through here, and goes up into nineteen, it's about half, I'm sure it's a ditch.
Well, but the only other way, like you said, wait until, or try to get a couple four-wheelers, something, and drive with, drive in between, see if you check any rocks up, and, I mean, how big a rock, we're going to check up.
Yeah, they're talking like they're pretty big rocks.
I think that's...
Otherwise?
I cannot...
Most of them, if it's...
Most of them, it's good. I mean, I've been on a fair amount of it, our guys have been on some of it, but we didn't want to go on area that wasn't...
Silt or strip, maybe.
You don't know some of it, it may be farmed right through the...
Oh, yeah, that area, there's a fair amount, a fair amount of grass along the ditch line. But like you say, you don't want to really drive through the picket, the guy says there's rocks out in there. Yeah.
At least not ours.
Well, listen...
I have enough trouble with my pickup. About hunting rocks.
Well, I'm fine if you want to continue it till fall, that's fine, and pick a day.
It looks like there's beans along there, so hopefully there'll be, isn't that bean?
Beans and weeds.
Beans and weeds along the ditch ditch. Well, it looks like beans.
Rick, wouldn't, wouldn't it be, I mean, you said you looked at most of it, so sure you have, but before this was all said and done, not only this area, but wouldn't it be, did I get the whole?
Yes.
There's the length of, of the project, if you will.
Yes, yeah, I'd like to do that, too, yeah.
Because isn't this, really, I mean, the way this is all structured, is that you don't really sign off on anything, this is completion, until everything is done.
Right, and then you have the completion hearing, and then pay them thirty days later, so, yeah.
Because otherwise, if you jump the gun on this, and you go out in this particular area, and it's something a little more egregious than a, you know, tennis ball-sized rock, then you got no recourse.
There you go.
So...
And I have not talked to the landowner, I don't get the name and number from Trish, talk to them.
Can you give us a heads up as to when, you know, he thinks he's going to come by in, you know? You want to do something like in October?
I think so.
End of October?
Late October, first November.
Yeah, and you get a six weeks, seven hours...
November fourth.
Uh-uh.
Fair. Oh, yeah, I know, you don't want to do it then, do you?
No, it's election time.
Election time, yeah, do you want to go earlier then?
Wednesday or later.
Well, you have the twenty-ninth of October, that's, this hopefully isn't going to be a big deal. Do you want to go the twenty-ninth, or you want to go a week after, we have like, twenty-ninth at nine o'clock? Is that a good, yeah?
All right, I'll put the most date for twenty-ninth of October at nine o'clock for completion of DD number three.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to continue the continuation of DD number three at nine AM. Any other discussion?
So, along with that, that, before that time period, you'll check the entire project?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
A lot of it's real easy to drive, and you can see it's fine, I actually took my car out there last week on some of it.
You're not paying any damages on your car, Rick?
No, no, I don't.
You damaged it.
I hope that I didn't damage anything, it was my wife's car accident.
No, that's okay.
Oh, that's all right.
That's not a problem.
That's your problem.
Yeah, I will. You've got it.
We will not feel a phone call from your wife. All in favor?
Aye.
Both same sign, motion carries.
While I was out there, I looked at old times crossing pipe, they ended up putting in a new CMP pipe, you might have known this, Bruce, I didn't, I didn't remember, that's what they're going to end up doing, but, put in brand-new when flow line looks good, looks like it'll be good, the job installing it, yeah, should be there forever, none of[1626.31] None of us will have to worry about it again.
Good. Heard what we're shooting for.
Exactly, so.
And the other one?
The other, uh, oh, um, Rasmussen's?
Rasmussen's?
Yeah, I was out there, too. Um, another good job installing. They did railroad car, um, and, uh, yeah, did a fine job. I'm not sure we need to do any more repathing at the outlet. There's a lot of rock there already. I'd like to wait till the grass die, dries down and look at it again. Just around the corner, as it goes on to, into the west, there's silk up in the ditch.
I mean, that bend is what we were worried about, right on that curve to flow.
You can see quite a bit of rock in there already.
Okay.
My guess is we'll have to add some, but I'd like a better look at it.
Perfect.
So, we'll see how that.
Well, we got two things done that we wanted to get done.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
Um, I went out to the quarry, um, Patrick, what was his name? I didn't get his last name. Um, it, the ditch is so steep, I didn't crawl down in there, but I could, went and looked at each end and it looks fine. I told him, we may wanna just check the flow lines to be sure it's okay. He said, whatever you need, don't worry about stopping at the office, just do what you need to do. Now, they've gotten that driveway widened by just making, widening the surface and then making the slopes a little steeper, but it looks like it's staying there good. It was all with rock, crushed limestone, so it's, it's good and solid. Um, we drove in his pickup right there, just stopped right on top of it, got out and looked at it, at the ends, um, but, uh, I would like to check the flow lines.
And what about size? Yeah, diameter?
That's like, yeah, when they're down in the ditch, I'm having to verify the size. It's right where the old one was, so I, I have to believe it's still that pipe, but, um, we'll get the size and the flow lines here probably this week.
Okay.
Flow lines, the flow is down to about two feet. I still, we got about an inch and a half rain out there, just, just.
That's probably where.
Yeah, I was gonna say, Trish, last week five, this week inch and a half.
Probably a day, right?
So, we'll have that done fairly timely with the, the, like you said, the size?
Yes, yeah, yeah.
And don't we check the flow line?
Look, you know, you can't tell what the size, just looking, but it, it looks like the ten footer. Um, I think some what we saw in the aerials was that the, it's tapered on the end, yeah, so it's not bent down on the top. I thought it might have bent from the flight we did of it, but it's not. We'll get down in the ditch, I'll give one of my guys, one of my younger guys.
Yeah.
That's okay. And, uh, and they'll have the GPS to get flow lines and check the size, so.
Because obviously you wanna know that sooner than later.
Yes.
If there is anything that needs to be done, they'd be want, done before spring.
Yes, yes, absolutely. And if there was something different needed to be done, that I'm sure we could work with them as far as, um, moving it, installing a new one, and then taking the old one out, so. Um, guy was real good to visit with. Friendly, said, just come in anytime and do whatever you need to do, so.
Look forward to your technical report then in the, in the future.
Yeah, yeah, next few days, we'll get that taken.
All right, anything else?
Um.
Are we in a hurry?
Oh.
No, but we have people there on the agenda, and I'm assuming they might be.
I'm just trying to engage my conversation.
No, you can talk, we're, we're listening.
Oh, go ahead.
I got just DD five, thirty-five Ranch Seed, the job they've started out there. Um, they have hit a lot of sandy conditions. They knocked off a couple of days and, and brought their box, construction box, to have them in the trench back. Um, they got up to where they're connecting or following the path of the old main, and there was so much flow in there, they took off for two or three days. Um, and then I expect to see them out there here when I go out there now. They were gonna wait and come back. No, maybe there was enough rain again, but just north of town, DD thirty-five Ranch Seed.
South of Dial?
Uh, yeah, yeah, south of Dial, yeah. So, they're at it, they haven't complained, they, they used some rock, but, uh, it was, they needed it, I mean, it's, so. So, they're working at it, not making a lot of progress just because of site conditions, but from what we've seen, very good contractor, doing the right things, the right times. Um, I worked with them getting the apron set to start, 'cause they came in like two or three days ahead of when they said they were going to, so we hadn't staked the apron, but we'd stake leading to it, so just worked with them a day that they were setting that so they could take off. And that, since then, it's been slow hitting sand. The bottom is on a good, good layer of clay, but just a little up from that, but right now they're fighting the sand planks.
So, does that go across that, is it bean field? Does that cut across that?
Yes.
Did they plant that, or is that?
It's, it looks to me like it's all planted.
That's what I wondered, if they're gonna take that out or wait?
Yep. No, they're, we're cutting silage on a Palo Alto job because the contractors wanted to be doing a project, but these here, it's beans and, yeah.
So then by the time they get that across that part of the land, uh, seed corn, hopefully it'll be gone.
There you go, yes.
They started south of town here, so.
I can't believe how far along, how mature it looked when I was down there last week.
Yeah, kill it.
Kill it. Spray.
Okay.
Spray, what is it, salt?
Saline solution.
Saline.
Oh, really?
It's only that.
Nyes, and they can get after it faster.
Beans are thirrs. Okay.
Those farms around the cow farm could come out there this week. And they'll end up working down the Walnut Road there in a couple of days. They were at Brett's place yesterday.
That's what I thought, I saw trucks coming from up that direction.
Okay.
So, they'll be full board?
Yeah.
Perfect.
Excellent. I swiped my head for notes.
Now we yield the floor to.
Okay. It went to FEMA meeting last week.
Oh, yeah.
It was very careful.
Yeah.
Big package.
Yeah. I've already submitted our FEMA request online, like five different passwords and logins, so that's good. Um, what I need from you guys, possibly, is to look at, um.
I'm looking at.
If you know of any places that are issues. And also, I've talked with Wright County, and they're hiring, um, Bill Jacobs from JGG Grant Management, um, affiliate from Trainers. We've had him here back in two thousand eight or ten. When I started, he was, we were just wrapping up stuff. I, I, we need to suggest using him again, and.
Or what? Do you have like?
I don't know.
They put together a lot of the form application stuff as far as the requests for work orders. Um, I have to send out a notice probably today to the landowners for, not only those, for contractors to get rates into me, because we have to be competitive and all that. Um, I don't know if we can technically ask landowners if they have issues. And the FEMA event was from like June sixth to July second, so I'm reviewing work orders that have been submitted that aren't potentially because of that.
We have some things on the books, the work order book, right now, correct? So, you're looking at that, good.
And I was talking to Rick also, and we were considering, you know, like DD three, four, and three and forty-seven, Humbleton, right? They have some sloughing issues because of the high water. And, um, I know there's a big pipe down by Pioneer that's completely washed out of the ditch bank and laying in the ditch.
This one out here in Roosevelt.
And what do you have?
On Walkeville.
What's that?
That's, uh, right on the trail, just north of the trail in Roosevelt, I think.
Oh, the washout?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, and DD six.
And, yeah, DD six.
Gary.
Gary Keaton. And then, of course, the one out here with David Boswell.
I was gonna say, wouldn't that one plus?
Is that the?
Yeah.
Definitely that one.
I think one.
Yeah.
I'm thinking that would be.
Yeah, I was, I pulled, I gotta.
Hey, Nate.
And, um, I don't know if, um, I haven't seen the DD thirty-five bulkhead thing. I don't know if there's, you have, if you have hazard.
Thirty-three.
Thirty-three?
Yeah.
Yeah. A hazard mitigation?
I have a picture I was supposed to send you, I'm assuming I didn't.
But Trish, uh, mentioned Wright County and someone that they were gonna contract with?
Yeah.
Is that in nutshell, to help with the phenomenal amount of paperwork required, get everything correct, and submit to FEMA?
Yeah, and he actually, um, has worked for Homeland Security FEMA and that, so he knows what they are requesting and what they want to see. Maybe, yeah, something like that. Last time I had a FEMA event, there was only a few work orders on DD four, and the guy that came out to look at it from FEMA, the representative, didn't even go down in the open ditch and look at it, and he hugely underestimated the cost of the project to repair it to what it was before. And if we wanna upgrade or whatever, say the pipe was too small, we'd have to do hazard mitigation to improve upon it. And that can be determined by Bill also. And like I said, he does a lot of the paperwork submitted. And then Rick was also telling me, Mr. Palo Alto, that did drone flights for their own.
They authorized us last week to do drone flights on, there are other, we got about three quarters of their ditches on the list already, and they're gonna have us do them all. And, and what happened in O'Brien County, we finished a ditch, we'd flown it before, or we flew it right after it was done, we flew it after the storm. FEMA isn't even going out to look at the ditch, they're gonna use our drone flights, uh, to, to look at the assessed damage. And that's what Palo Alto County's hoping to do, is use the drone. We're providing them, um, flash drives for each district, uh, and they'll be labeled what road you're crossing, what section you're in, uh, those kinds of things to get you right on it, so, um, Palo Alto's hoping the same thing, that they can just use that footage. We've got that cost down to a hundred and fifty to two hundred dollars a mile, uh, to fly it, get it on a flash drive with the roads labeled, the sections labeled, and provide it to the county, so. We're getting twelve or thirteen of them to them already in Palo Alto tomorrow. Um, and they're working with Gary Atherton out of Oak Hana's County, he's assistant to the county engineer and drainage clerk, right? Because he's done so much work before. Just my thought after talking to Trish was, would it be worthwhile to fly these that you just finished, three, four, three dash forty-seven? Because they were restored.
Yeah, they were, and those are gonna be susceptible to the wash.
There you go.
With the wash.
I think it'll be a great idea to fly them.
I, it's, it's very economical.
And also, it's a good record for the future.
Oh, absolutely. That's part of why Palo Alto's having us fly all of theirs, 'cause they can refer to this date, here's how it looked. Kind of as a site issue, and we haven't mentioned it to the county yet, is from these flights, they found several field crossings that are too small. Um, nobody's probably ever seen them before, uh, out in the middle of the section and not causing serious backup, but most of the time, so there may be some corrective action taken as part of that, too.
So, what would your timeframe in order for her to have her paperwork and stuff done was, you'd be able to accomplish?
Yeah, we've got half of Palo Alto's done in a week, so.
If Palo Alto doesn't do us any good.
No, I know, I'm just saying we can do it quickly, yeah.
The only problem with that is, as far as any FEMA monies, is they're gonna wanna be for and after. So, they're, I mean, flying it now, after the, the event time.
That's why I mentioned three, four, and three dash forty-seven. They were completely clean, no slough fobs left.
Yeah, they, they were done, so now if we see damage, we know what was done since.
Since those, I would say, yeah.
Yeah.
But otherwise, to just go out and do everything, is it, you know?
Well, yeah, there wouldn't be a push to do the others. That'd be great information to have.
Right.
But wouldn't be urgent.
So, you think that the ones that were just done, they would hold, they would hold up for?
Yeah.
Damage?
I think it would, too.
Yeah.
Just for the simple fact that they were done.
Even though you don't have a directly after completion drone flight?
Right. But it was all inspected, it was all degraded, the slough fobs were all removed.
So, you can, you've got.
We saw on part of it. We had the seeding, video on three and forty-seven.
Oh.
I mean, it's a partial, and it shows that it was completed and seeded and.
Oh, sure.
And that's what they want, is they're requesting plans and specifications, maintenance records, dimensions and sketches. I mean, pictures of everything.
There's the drone flight.
Yeah.
I mean, that'll.
Okay.
So, how is that person that you recommended hiring, do they just get paid a flat fee? Do they get a percentage? Do they, how is that?
I don't know.
And who is responsible for paying them? Does that go to?
To me, the ditch, or the drainage?
And it would also, as with the, um, drone flights, would be, and the engineering, any time invested in it, would be submitted to FEMA for reimbursement, seventy-five percent, and, um, Iowa's sub-grant funding is ten percent, so it would be a total of eighty-five percent unapplicable, submitted. Um, it also includes my time, I got a lot in and out, but.
What about our time?
Yeah.
Your time is donated.
Well, I.
I think that, if it's, that way we at least have the, uh, ability that he knows what he's doing as opposed to us kinda stumbling down the, those things.
Yeah, 'cause we get involved in this FEMA, Trish had enough experience previously.
Yeah, and he's told in the corner, and we're wondering why they haven't responded next year.
They didn't have a certain box filled correctly.
And the recent drainage fixes, which there's record of when they were fixed, cleaned out, if you will, if it's a drainage ditch, yeah, get the video evidence of those, to say, don't worry about other ones right now, but. Was that because it speaks to something right now?
Yes, yes. We can help with the description of the work that was done on each of the ditches.
Well, you have, we have that, and that's, sounds like what Trish just read.
Yeah.
That's, yeah, this was just done, so here's the, everything that was done, and here's the date it was done, there's no denying that.
Right.
And then here's the drone flight from some of these very recently, all this past summer.
Yeah.
So, I think that would go a long ways to get, 'cause I know, you're dealing with the federal government, you're dealing with FEMA, it's not a cut and dry deal.
No.
But.
No, and we've sent people that don't know if anybody's drainage district or anything, and they're like, oh, I'm not climbing down there.
They've sent people from Texas.
Yeah, true, right, that's true.
But that has no idea.
All they wanna know is Gators, though.
Yeah, they said it's a Lloyd complex of interest, where you can show up and maybe you knew who the farmer was.
Yeah.
Really?
So.
Were you gonna make that?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to, for three dash forty-seven, District Four and Three, the three that we did work on this spring or last fall, to do drone flights and inspect them for, be the damage. The damage that would be covered by FEMA.
Was it just all two, or was there one other one?
Yeah, three. Three forty-seven, four, and three, oh, four, okay, excuse me, yeah.
Okay.
So, we have a motion to do drone flights of those, three and the second. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. Do you need a motion to put that gentleman in contact?
Boy, oh, yep. And, real great stickler on this, I'd have to post it in the paper for two weeks.
Okay.
To hire someone.
All right.
And then we'll have to, it's like accepting bids, so, we'll, does that sound good?
Yeah.
That's the way we have to do it.
Motion put it in paper.
Second.
Motion and second to publicize.
Yeah.
Any other discussion?
Make note of what you're publicizing, if you can.
The name of, was it Bill?
Well, it just has to be a.
That's gonna be, I'd be, I'd be, I'd be. Publish what we're gonna point on doing.
Competent consultant.
There you go, consultant.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion carries. That's it.
Um.
Yeah.
Also, drainage assistance are going out today.
Good thing they laid down.
I was gonna say, so that means we.
I'm going on vacation for a month.
Denied.
It'll be, it'll get better.
What's your number?
Yeah, anything else, Granny?
Yes.[1721.33] Yes. I also, I'm sorry.
You have to ask.
You know.
Um, I got an email from INF regarding our joint district, um, two and twenty-eight with Wright County, regarding.
Is that up in the corner?
What's the number again?
Two dash twenty-eight.
What's Wright County?
Humboldt and Wright, yeah. It's where, um, cage free chickens live.
Oh, it's down towards seventeen.
Yeah, over by here, three.
They want to, um, to accommodate development, they are petitioning to reroute the district's main tile through their property. The reroute was approved and constructed with all expenses paid for by the Iowa Cage Green, including inspection, um, yeah, they want to relocate it between the two barns.
And they're paying all of the expenses, so all of the needs of permission, the way it sounds, right?
Yeah.
Somebody check the site thing, or?
Well, I S G has engineering plans, so.
Is it Humboldt, Wright, or the Wright Humboldt, who has the main?
I think.
Would be Wright Humboldt.
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 I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think.
Building was sitting in Wright County.
We, I guess it's.
Well, it's actually in Wright County.
But the work is being done in Wright County.
Yeah. But the district is.
And it sounds like they're just rerouting a main around a building that's gonna be built.
Do you have any, uh, information from would be Wright County supervisors, trustees?
Not yet. I just got this email last week. And, uh, forwarded it to me, and I, uh, what you guys feeling, what's your action? And I haven't heard back yet.
I thought they did that when they built the building.
They did, but they're adding, you know, they add it on, so they wanna do, or adding on, or increasing it.
Twelve cage free layer barns?
They're adding twelve?
Well, if you don't have cages, you're gonna have a lot more room.
That one down there is huge.
They want to add like almost two thousand, you know, eighteen and.
Well, it must be the same size, otherwise it's called an improvement.
Yeah.
So. Sometimes, though, we've had situations where the, the new route was a little longer, so ended up with not as much fall, so you have to step up the pipe. Oh, I see. Well, it's properly engineered. There you go, that's it, yeah.
This brings up a good point, yeah, just because you're saying that when they're moving it, and they're standing across the corporation or whatever.
Based on an investigation, they're changing approximately a hundred, or four hundred and seventy-five feet of fourteen inch clay to thirteen hundred feet of eighteen inch reinforced concrete.
Okay.
And then it says that, Grant wrote, um, final three stormwater detention basins proposed in order to control the runoff. Two of these basins will outlet into the district main.
Is there something?
Did you look this over?
No, I didn't. She just got, and this is first I got her.
I don't know, but this should be something we should probably look into more.
I think so, because you named, that one thing you just read, uh, I have no stretch imagination, a drainage expert lawyer, but you just said something about storm retention being outletted into the tile. Uh, I don't know if this site, well, they are in the drainage district, obviously. Are they paying their fair share on, you know, the levying process? And Dave and I had a conversation, he had heard the little information.
All of a sudden you got all this rough runoff.
There you go.
That is potential.
Their reclassification. That, that, they, bottom line is, their, I guess if declassifications were to be more.
Their benefit would change in this.
Yes, yes. So I think we should look into this to make sure that it handles.
Detention will help the rate of flow, but with all the roughs on hard surface, there's gonna be a lot more runoff. Total runoff will be a lot more, they're gonna throttle down using these detention ponds, but, yeah.
And it's a fourth inch coefficient.
For tile.
A lot of the right track with that, that it, the reclassification could change, and it could pay more.
Yes, it should.
Yes.
So do you just wanna?
Table that.
Table it.
A little more information, and I'd like to hear, means it is a joint district that Wright County is.
Who's the engineer on that project? This is, is it, say?
Ivan Johnson.
Ivan, just have Ivan come and talk to us.
Yeah, Ivan's good.
No.
Two weeks.
No, two weeks.
Be here next week.
Oh, that's right.
You can have him come anyway, you can.
Still practice.
Okay.
I'm.
You're free to add.
I'm free to add, anything else?
Uh.
No.
That's your estimate?
Does have an estimate. Um, press that in. He's already working on it.
Press it down.
Press it down and turn around.
I guess if you.
Looks like I'm getting it, huh?
No, I'm just, that's our estimate that I asked for, or we asked for, for that Boswell bulkhead.
Sounds close.
If you ask for it, you got it. That's a return on.
Thirty-three is all you're.
We're headed to FEMA.
So.
What'd you say?
Oh, yeah, it'd be definitely a FEMA plan.
Is this a legit fix to the problem? I mean.
Oh, a bandage, is what you're saying.
Yeah, is there a better solution to this?
I think it's probably the best, you know, you only got two options, you gotta have a cement bulkhead, or you gotta have a lot of riprap.
Okay.
And what's, what's better? Well, we looked at out there, and that's on the thirty-three.
Yeah.
Yeah. What he, what we talked about doing is the best solution, I think. Extend, basically extending the bulkhead down deeper to cut off the flow, throw it in, repair the tile, washed out. Um, that's the best long-term fix, I think. It's amazing the bulkhead's still there, actually.
So you're talking putting riprap underneath it, and then like boxing that where it's well, coming down through it?
Yeah, digging down, down into the undisturbed soil, basically pouring a wall behind the current bulkhead to go deeper with it, to cut off the movement.
But as deep as that, I mean, Dave sent me a picture of that picture last week, that's.
Yeah, and they're gonna replace the pipe through the wall and re-concrete around it, um, and do a better, redo the connection back to where that pipe connects to the.
Because otherwise, that's just gonna keep rip, you know?
Yeah.
One, water's gonna keep going to that down through there.
So they, yeah, they're gonna dig a trench and then form up from down in the existing ground up to behind the, the existing bulkhead, to just basically cut off that route for the top, for the water.
Well, that's the estimate, and I think that, like you said, Rick, is about what you guessed, man.
I figured five thousand materials, and it's eleven thousand five hundred, usually labor and materials, about, but he still, it's pretty close. Yeah, yeah. That's the rule of thumb.
I'm all done.
You're all done.
Motion to go out of drainage.
Second.
Motion in the second. All in favor?
All right.
Pose same sign.